Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Lightner?
Here.
Commissioner Walz?
Here.
Commissioner Rice?
Here.
Commissioner Duckham?
Here.
Commissioner Alexander?
Present.
Commissioner Mahoney?
Here.
Commissioner Palachik?
Here.
Commissioner Elwell?
Here.
Chairman Sherwell?
Here.
All present.
Entertain a motion to approve the agenda, please.
I don't move.
Have a motion?
Support.
I have support. Commissioner Alexander?
I'd like to make a request to amend the agenda, please. I'd like to move 17C, which is Commissioner Workshop with Peter Cole, which is currently under new business. I would request that we move that to 5A, Special Orders and Public Hearings.
Thank you. As Chair's prerogative, I would like to move Tim McGuire to immediately following that. He will become 5B. Any other changes to the agenda? Seeing nor hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Duly carried. We have no awards and recognition to come before the Board this evening. At this time, if you have any communications or petitions, please present them to the clerk so they may be recorded. Seeing none, we are now arrived at Special Orders and Public Hearings. At this time, I'd like Peter Cole to step forward, please, if he could, and address the Board.
Well, would you like to hear from the famous Tim McGuire first because the copies that I have are being run right now?
I will happily listen to Tim McGuire first, certainly.
Tim told me he didn't want to wait for me anyway.
I have chat, Your Honor. Thank you very much. It's really my pleasure to be here to address you tonight, and I know you have a long agenda, so I'll keep it brief. But Jackson County has certainly had a longstanding tradition with MAC and being involved in MAC. I look up over here at some of the pictures, and I'm going to date myself, but I see your father's picture, who I worked very closely with. He was on one of our committees at MAC. And Bob Lysinski, of course, was the president of MAC. And Max Vittoto up there, he was around when I first started and is one of the people that was involved in the buying of the building that we're in now in downtown Lansing. He was part of that Board of Directors that made that purchase, and we've really appreciated the -- all the influence that Jackson County has with the association, and I encourage you to continue with that. We're just getting settled in in Lansing, as you know. The state of the state and the Governor's proposal on transportation, and I'll talk about that in a little bit, but we're just getting kind of settled in. We had a reception a couple of weeks ago with all of the members of the legislature that come from county government. And about one-third of the sitting Michigan legislature comes from county government. And what we like to do is make sure that we remind those folks that come from county government to remember the chairs that they sat in a couple of years before getting there and remembering what the struggles and the issues that all of you faced. And so we want to make sure that they recognize and remember where they came from. And most of them do. So we're really pleased. We had a very good turnout there, and it was great to establish those relationships once again with those former county commissioners. As a matter of fact, it's kind of interesting. Peter and I rode together, and we were talking about Kalamazoo County, and Kalamazoo County has six new members on their Board of Commissioners. But what's interesting is three of the former county commissioners are now serving in the legislature. So we've got some good friends from Kalamazoo County that recognize what's going on in county government. I brought you some meeting materials that kind of outline what we are doing and our agenda at MAC. I believe that we have three of the finest lobbyists in Lansing that are on their feet every day over at the Capitol, over at the House Office Buildings and Senate Office Buildings, the committee hearings, and talking about and making sure that they're advocating on behalf of Michigan's 83 counties. I'm very pleased to tell you that we were very successful last year in working with the Governor and the Governor's Office on revenue sharing. For the first time in over 12 years, the counties in Michigan will receive 100% funding for revenue sharing in 2015. With the Governor's additional budget this year, the proposal is the same, 100% revenue sharing, like I said, the first time in over 12 years. So we're really proud of that, and we're very pleased that finally we were able to convince the Governor that we were not cities, we're not townships, we are counties, and our struggles are much different. Some are the same, but much different. Also, preventing unfunded mandates, that's one of our agenda items for this year. And I don't want to go through all those 2015 priorities. You can take a look at those and review those. Want to make sure that everybody gets our weekly update via email. That's a very good resource to just kind of give you a snapshot of what's happened in the week and what's coming up. And so I want to make sure that you have a chance to read through that. One other important item that I'm going to outline for you is what happened in May of 2014. And as you know, the Supreme Court came down with a ruling that said that counties were not able and courts were not able to collect fines in criminal cases. This cost the counties a tremendous amount of money, and we had to react very, very quickly. And we had to get some legislation together. Our lobbying team got the stakeholders together, all the groups, the prosecutors, the sheriffs, the courts, any of the other groups, and we were able to come to an agreement on some legislation. And we got that legislation passed in early September, and it was signed by the Governor, thus letting the counties collect those fines and keep the money flowing in for purposes of running the courts. So with that, I will turn this over back over to Peter Cole. I encourage you to get involved in MAC. We're having our Legislative Conference at the end of this month. It's going to be held in Lansing, the 29th and 30th of March, and hope that you will be able to come and be able to exchange some ideas and be able to attend some of the workshops and get involved in MAC. Once again, thank you very much. If there's something that we can do for you in the future, please don't feel that there's any restraint whatsoever of calling us or sending us an email, and we'll be glad to get the information to you. Once again, thank you for having me here tonight.
Well, Tim didn't talk long enough. Adam is getting the outline, but I'll proceed anyway if that's acceptable. I'm Peter Cole, and we're a firm out of Lansing. We represent counties. We've been doing that for over 30 years, and that's all we do. So our practice is limited to representing municipalities and particular counties. And I was asked today to do just an introduction, kind of a workshop-type overview of certain areas of county law that I've found over the years that have been problematic. So I'm going to just hone in on some of those areas. If you have any questions, please, by all means, let me know. But the first thing that should be noted is county boards of commissioners act as a body. No individual commissioner has any more authority than the other commissioner unless the Board of Commissioners delegates additional authority to that particular commissioner. So for an example, one county commissioner, for an example, had a situation last week in another county, of course. They were involved in some disciplinary matters. They happen to know this particular employee, and they became quite involved in it and didn't let it go through the normal county process, which in this case, they had an HR director, they had a department, they had a whole process that was in a collective bargaining contract. So that, I got a call from their corporate counsel and asked me about it. I said, "No, the individual commissioner did not have any legal authority to do anything more than any other commissioner unless he or she was given that authority by the county board." Now, you may have that in your rules and that sort of thing, but that's one thing I wanted to mention. The county boards of commissioners act as a body and not as an individual, and then you delegate to different commissioners whatever powers that you so desire, which is your prerogative. The other thing, too, to keep in mind, and you'll have this outline, I'm hoping shortly. Pardon me?
I think this is what's in.
Oh, okay.
I haven't seen the copy you gave me.
Yes, it's the 17th that was sent out, and wonderful. Okay. Technology, wonderful. All right. The other piece here is that county boards of commissioners don't have general police powers. So a city, village, or township, for an example, has general police powers. They can enact laws and rules and regulations related to the health, welfare, and morals of the community. General police power. County boards of commissioners don't have that. So on county boards of commissioners, what you have to look for is certain specific statutory authorization if you want to do something. So as a city can do certain things that you can't do. A couple of examples. I've had requests for an opinions over the years. Recently, there was one, can a county enact a gun ordinance? County-wide gun ordinance? The answer to that is no. There's no independent authority for the county to enact a gun ordinance. Another one I had, this was last year, actually. The county wanted to enact a noise ordinance. They were having some issues that local jurisdictions, the townships, this is a more rural county up north, the townships didn't want to deal with it. They wanted to pass it on to the county and have uniformity. And they asked me for an opinion. I said, "No, you can't enact a county-wide noise ordinance. You don't have the legal authority to do that because you don't have general police powers." What they ended up doing was we drafted a model ordinance for all the townships, and those that wanted to adopt them, they adopted them, and then they contracted with the Sheriff's Department to enforce them. So there are certain ways you can assist townships, but you yourself cannot enact that kind of an ordinance. As a matter of fact, as you see my outline, there are certain limits on the powers that you have even to enact an ordinance. Example, you have an animal control ordinance. Oops, I'm pressing the wrong buttons. You have the power to enact an animal control ordinance, and you have one. But if the city of Jackson enacts their own animal control ordinance, your ordinance is not in effect in the city of Jackson. The statute, which I have under number two here, the statute says that a county can enact certain ordinances that relate to a county's concerns that don't interfere with another jurisdiction's ordinance on the same subject matter. So the best example I can think of, because this happens quite often, is you have an animal control ordinance, you have a specific authority under the state law to enact one, but if Jackson wanted to enact an ordinance and did enact an ordinance, our ordinance wouldn't be in effect in the city, which most of the time, the cities don't like that because they prefer you to take care of that kind of work. David?
Peter, what about a pawnbroker ordinance? Is that something that we maybe have addressed before, and are they in use in other counties?
You don't have the authority to enact a pawnbroker ordinance as well. Now, keeping in mind with this sort of situation, counties also, and I'm telling you this not because I necessarily like it or whatever, to keep you out of trouble. We've been fortunate enough to represent Jackson County for a number of years in various matters. We recently were involved in some successful litigation for you as well. But at any rate, you cannot give money to a nonprofit corporation, no matter how good the purpose is. So for an example, if you have big brothers, big sisters that come to you and say, "We'd like a donation. Give us $10,000 so we can help these kids." Well, you can't donate money. But what you can do is contract for services that you yourself could perform on your own. Let me give you a couple of examples. I had a case a number of years ago, this was in Ingham County, where Ingham County contracted with various nonprofit corporations to provide health department services, provide education, not educational, health department services and some other services. There was a lawsuit filed claiming that the county didn't have the authority to do that. I just walked into court and said, "Yes, Your Honor, they do have the authority to do it on their own. If they could do it on their own, they could contract with someone else to do it." And the case was dismissed, and they proceeded to do it. Yes, sir?
Mr. Cole, I'm sure you have a quick and simple answer for this. When you described us not being able to fund nonprofits, in our case...
Donate money, not fund.
Donate, okay.
Donate money.
Okay, that clarified it because we have a CMH, your LifeWays, which the state mandates us to provide a lot of money to in their nonprofit. So that's why I was wondering.
Right. Community mental health is a state statute, mental health services, and there's a 90-10 match that if you're going to participate with a mental health entity, you pay 10%. What I'm talking about is, let's see, let me give you another example. I had one, there's a museum, Impression Five Museum in Lansing. They had a problem with their roof a few years ago, and they came to the County Board of Commissioners and said, "You know, can you give us $20,000 to fix our roof?" The Board called me, and they said, "What can we do?" I said, "Well, what you can do is enter into a contract with them whereby they will provide a service which you could otherwise provide on your own." There's a state statute which allows county boards of commissioners to increase tourism, for an example, and also have their own museums. So what we did was, we had a contract with Impression Five Museum. The county gave them, I forgot what it was, $20,000 to fix the roof, and in return, the consideration to the county was, they would allow, this was Ingham County, Ingham County residents to go into the museum several days a week without any fee. They'd allow schoolchildren of the county to also go into the museum at a reduced cost. So that was a consideration that the county residents received because the county was allowed to have these types of programs for their own residents, and they did a little advertising, so that would enhance tourism. So you usually can find a way to fund these nonprofits, but what you have to keep in mind is, one, it has to be something that you yourself could otherwise do on your own by state statute. Two, you must have a contract with that entity. And the third thing is, there must be some kind of consideration to the county residents for the money, like letting schoolchildren in at a reduced cost. So that's the type of thing that you look for, and we do literally hundreds of these types of contracts, and we've been doing it for years. So usually, there's a way, we can find a way for you to fund a nonprofit entity, do it through a contract. Yes, sir?
Thanks again, Mr. Cole. Just to take it a step further, and again, I'm sure you have an answer to this, but hypothetically, what if a county was approached by a nonprofit, and that nonprofit wanted the county to sell bonds for them for a capital improvement project, and then that nonprofit entity would pay back the county?
Can't do it.
Can't do it?
No.
Okay, I cleared something up. Thank you.
Now, what you can do is this. A lot of counties, do you have a millage for your library? All right. Now, we had a case, Hillsdale, not too long ago. There was a problem over there with their libraries. It's one of my partners handled that case. And you have a millage. You want to, you ask the people, will you fund the library? The people say yes. Then the money comes to you, then you decide how you want the service to be provided. Do you want to contract with an existing library? You want to create your own entity, so on and so forth. So you should not have a millage for a specific entity. No way you should do that. But what you can do is have the millage for the particular purpose and then contract out for the service or provide the service yourself. Do you have a senior citizen millage here in the county? And you have your own senior citizen department? All right. So you have a millage, you fund your own department. I was involved in two counties up north, Lealona County and Calcasque. I'm not saying anything out of school because it was in the papers recently, where they had some issues with the Commission on Aging. They acted kind of independently, and they had a millage. So what they did was they brought it back in-house to the county, and the millage funds, of course, were used. But before, what they used to do is give it to these other entities, and they weren't satisfied with the use of all the funds, let's put it that way. So the moral of the story is, A, you cannot just donate to a nonprofit, but you can contract with them for a service that you yourself could otherwise perform, and you make sure you get consideration for the people. Any questions? Okay, I won't go too long. They gave me a time limit. One of the other issues here, and this is crucial, I think, is understanding the role and relationship between the Board of Commissioners and the six wide county-elected officials, the sheriff, the prosecutor, the registered deeds, drain commissioner, so on and so forth. Who is the county clerk representative here? Are you the county clerk? Okay.
And registered deeds.
And registered deeds. Well, you're a big shot then. You're at two roles, right? All right. What the law is, that as far as employees are concerned, you have a co-employer relationship with your six wide county-elected officials. And what this means is, they have the absolute right to hire, fire, and discipline unless they modify that under a collective bargaining contract. So for an example, people that work in a clerk registrar's office, you have the right to hire, fire, and discipline unless there's something different in a collective bargaining contract that covers these employees. Now, the Board of Commissioners, you have the absolute right to determine salaries and fringe benefits. So you decide what you pay employees that work in these six departments. You decide what fringe benefits they have. Fringe benefits includes paid time off. I had a situation 30 days ago in another county where the administrator called me and he said, "The," no offense, but the county clerk was allowing her employees unpaid or paid time off contrary to the county policy. What can we do about it? Don't pay them because you, as a Board of Commissioners, have the absolute right to determine the compensation, including fringe benefits, paid days off. You notify the clerk, you notify the employees. If you're going to let those people go for the day, we're not going to pay. We're not going to give them any more than everyone else receives in the county. So for the elected officials, they hire, they fire, they discipline, and the Board of Commissioners total control over the budget, the compensation and fringe benefits. I had a situation where, well, you also set the elected official salaries, too. And once you've set the elected official's salary, you can't reduce it during their term of office. So every four years, you set their salary, you can't reduce it during their term of office. But I had a case in another county where a new sheriff was appointed because there was a vacancy, and he wanted more money. And he got an attorney, threatened to sue the county. "Unless you give me this money, I'm going to sue you." They called me. "What can we do about it?" I said, "Well, you don't want to get involved in litigation, but let me ask you this. Does the sheriff have health insurance?" "Yeah, he does." "What does he have? Full family." "What does it cost a year? $15,000." "How much is he asking for for increase in his salary? $5,000." "Okay, well, here's what you can do. You can eliminate the fringe benefit of health insurance for the elected official if you want to." I called the attorney up, said, "Look, why you want to have litigation is, you know, it's going to cost the county a lot of money to hire me. I advised them, pay the $5,000 and eliminate his health insurance, which is worth 12 grand. What do you want to do about it?" Called me back and said, "Well, my client just decided to let it go. We're no longer interested in that $5,000." So the reason why I bring this up to you is that work things out. The key is to work things out and to know what authority you have so you can work them out. And my experience in Jackson County has been an excellent relationship between your elected officials and the Board of Commissioners. So I'm not suggesting anything different, but just to let you know, they hire, they fire, they discipline. For an example, if you have a nepotism policy, you cannot impose a nepotism policy on your elected officials. I've had a couple of cases like that, the Attorney General opinions and case law. If you want to have a nepotism policy, if they want to voluntarily adhere to it, that's fine, but you can't force them to. But you can control the purse strings. Any questions on this piece? All right. One other thing, too, is the Board of Commissioners must fund the elected officials' offices. This is a case that came out of Wayne County, so they can form their mandated functions to a serviceable level, and that's all in my outline. So let's say, for an example, an elected official comes up to you and they say, "I need another person. I can't get my job done." You have your county administrator look into it, and he says, "I think they can get it done. I've checked at various staffing levels and the caseload for this particular department, and I believe that we have enough staff for the workload." Now, the way it works is, you only have to fund them so they can form their mandated functions to a serviceable level. A serviceable level is the bare minimum by which to get by on. That's on page two of my outline. Urgent, extreme, critical, vital. But once again, you want to work it out with the person. You know, make sure that everyone works together on it, and maybe they need a half-time person. Maybe they don't need a full-time person. I've had a few cases like this where elected officials have sued the County Board of Commissioners, and I've never, they've never been successful. The Commissioners have always won because of this serviceability level. So once again, that's your only requirement to perform their mandated functions to a serviceable level. Serviceable level is bare minimum. Am I doing okay? Any questions? No one sleeping yet? Yes, sir? Yes. Once again, it's your prerogative to determine how many employees in each department. The only limit that you have as a Board of Commissioners is that you have to fund them so they can perform their mandated functions to a serviceable level. Once again, it's a minimum, critical, vital, as I outlined in here. Now, the other thing that I always like to talk about is the county administrator. I always look at the Board of Commissioners, no offense or anything, Michael, I always look at the Board of Commissioners as the Board of Directors of a municipal corporation. You set policy. You set goals. You make the decisions as where you want the county to go. You want to fund the health department more than you want to fund another department. Those are your decisions. Those are your policies. But I always recommend that the county administrator is your CEO, is your chief officer. I always recommend to the boards of commissioners, once you decide what you want to do, once you give the direction to your CEO, your county administrator, let him or her do their job. And as I said earlier, if you have, no one commissioner has more authority than the whole Board. So once you've established your goals, once you've established the course of action you want to take, you've passed it, the majority of the Board has passed it, you turn it over to your county administrator and let him do his job. Otherwise, you might find yourselves in certain difficulties. I'll give you an example of a case I had. Once again, when the majority of the Board of Commissioners makes a decision, then you're all stuck with it, whether you like it or not, you're stuck with it. I had a case where I was negotiating some labor contracts. There were 11 of them in this particular county, and I settled all of them except for 10. The last one that I didn't settle was the bigger one, is a steelworkers' contract. I was sitting at the table negotiating this contract, and the steelworkers' rep told me, she said, she pointed her finger at me, says, "You're lying. You have more money than you said you have." And I never lie when I'm negotiating to tell the truth and what the deal is, what, you know, you get your directions from the Board of Commissioners. I said, "No, I'm not." I said, "I think we're done for the day." I went back to the Board of Commissioners. We went into closed session, and we talked about it. Now, one commissioner said that they told her differently, but she told me that two commissioners told her that there was more money, which wasn't the case. Now, I'm sure there were some commissioners that wished there was more money, but the majority have spoken. So what my point is, once you make a decision, as the majority of you, then you're all stuck with it, whether you like it or not, and anything stated in closed session has to remain in closed session. You can't discuss it, otherwise it's a misdemeanor and civil penalties and all that. So any other, any questions on that kind of issue? I'm rushing through here a little bit. Next thing, courts. Courts are in a class by themselves. Why? Because the courts say so, right? There was some legislation in 1996, if I remember correctly, that the Michigan Legislature said that the employees that work for the judges will be, and I'll be county employees. Tim McGuire was there. Right away, we knew this would be ruled unconstitutional. There were certain meetings that took place with the Chief Justice at the time, and there was no question that would be ruled unconstitutional, separation of powers. So it was ruled unconstitutional. After that, the Michigan Association of Counties used our services to negotiate with the Supreme Court an administrative order, which we did. And with the cloud of MAC, the Michigan Association of Counties, I negotiated with the Supreme Court an administrative order, which you'll see in my outline here. And the only reason why I bring this up is, A, the court is the sole employer, B, what you should always do at budget time is request the judges to have a line item budget. Request it. Dear Judge, we appreciate a line item budget. We're requesting it. Once you request a line item budget, then the judges, due to this administrative order, cannot create new personnel positions, cannot give their employees more of an increase than you gave your employees, cannot give higher fringe benefits than you give your employees. So during your budget time, keep that in mind, and I know Mike's aware of this, you request the court to have a line item budget. Once that request is in, then they're limited on what they can do. But once again, work things out with the court. You want to make sure you have a good cooperative relationship. It's always, that's the best approach for everything as far as elected officials. Michael?
To be clear, they're limited because the Board adopts that line item budget, right? They can't change it after it's adopted.
Correct. But in order to be able to impose that, you have to request a line item budget, then they give you the line item budget. And Tim, if there's ever any issues with the court, Tim has some pipelines to those auspicious offices, and sometimes his assistance is greatly utilized. I'm not going to go into, the rest of this is with the courts, it's pretty much already laid out in my outline, but I do want to talk a little bit about, you want me to talk a little about going into closed session on the Open Means Act? All right. There are two areas on the Open Means Act that gets people in the most trouble. That's on page four of my outline. That's on page four of my outline. Going in the closed session, my purpose is preventative medicine. Do it the right way, you won't have a problem. As a matter of fact, I brought Open Meetings Act booklets. Let me get my briefcase here. Every couple of years, I-
Peter, can you hold on a second? We have a motion to receive-
Motion to receive.
All in favor? Those opposed?
Okay. Every couple of years, we update the Open Meetings Act booklet. We distribute them to our clients so that, keep, hopefully keep you out of trouble. But I want to go over right now is when you can go in a closed session. When you can go in a closed session. Now, there are some times when you need a two-thirds vote. Two-thirds vote. But that's a two-thirds vote of the entire body, not just of a quorum present. You have, what, nine Commissioners? My math is good tonight. So, a two-thirds vote, you need six. I'm glad you didn't have seven. I would have floundered with that one for a while. So, you need six votes, two-thirds, to go in a closed session of the total body for these areas. Now, you never have to go in a closed session unless you want to. No one can force you to go in a closed session.
Peter?
Yes, sir.
Can you explain what a total body is, the two-thirds? How it's the members, majority of members?
Total, two-thirds of the entire body, whether they're present or not. So, let's say- Yes, sir. So, let's, you have nine members on your Board. You have six people present at a Board meeting, and you have a quorum, but only five vote to go in a closed session. That's not two-thirds of the entire body, so you can't go in a closed session. Now, I've had a couple, uh, last year, I had two cases like that where they screwed up and they went in a closed session, but luckily, under the Open Meetings Act, if you reenact something that was done improperly, that will correct the defect. So, in this case, they went in the closed session, they didn't have a two-thirds vote, they came out and they voted on something, they didn't have the right to do it, so the next time they corrected it, and that's fine. But anyways, you go in a closed session for, for two-thirds of all the entire body, you always need six for these areas right here. I don't know what page that's on my outline. So, two-thirds vote, you need a two-thirds vote if you want to purchase or lease real estate. You want to buy some property? You want to lease some property? Six votes. You're permitted to go in a closed session to do that, if you want to. Once again, you never have to unless you want to. The second thing is, you cannot go in a closed session if you want to sell your property. You have three acres somewhere, a vacant land that's been sitting there for ten years, you want to get rid of it, you can't go in a closed session. I didn't make this up. This is, you know, the courts and the legislature. Lease it, purchase, closed session, two-thirds vote. If you want to sell it, you can't. But what you can do is hire a real estate person, and they can see what they can get for it for you, and report back to you. The second where you have to go in a closed session, or where you can go if you want to, consult with your attorneys regarding specific pending litigation. Now, the attorney must be present. There's a case that says, if you want to go in a closed session to discuss specific pending litigation for a potential settlement, you need to have your lawyer either present in person or by phone. I do a lot of this. What I do is, most of the time, I do it by phone. I'm not going to travel way up north for an hour and, uh, you know, three-hour drive. We do it by speakerphone, which you can do. So, settlement on specific pending litigation, attorney must be present, either in person or by speakerphone, Skype or what have you. The other thing is, you can go in a closed session for a written, two-thirds vote, a written opinion of your counsel. I've done this here several times. Michael's asked me for written opinions. Uh, the litigation that we were involved with here the past couple of years, closed session. But, the written, you cannot go in a closed session for verbal opinion. So, let's say, for an example, you ask me, "Can we enact an ordinance for regulate pawn shops?" If I come to you and you want to go in a closed session and talk about it verbally, we can't do it. But if I give you something in writing, then you can go in a closed session and talk about the written opinion. And the lawyer does not have to be present for that. Okay? Um, and of course, you can go in a closed session for strategy and negotiations with collective bargaining. The other thing-
What about, what about personnel matters?
All right. Personnel matters, that's a huge one. Thanks for reminding me. You can go in a closed session with, now, this is with a majority vote. What I had here listed without a two-thirds meaning of majority, so you can go in a closed session with five votes to consider the suspension, dismissal, or complaints against an employer or an official. But only, this is the hard part, but only if the named person requests you to. Case I had, a building official. He was accused of not working. He said that he worked till five o'clock, but he went home at three-thirty, four o'clock. He didn't complete his inspections. He was accused of having nice leisurely breakfasts. He was supposed to start work at eight. He started at nine-thirty because he loved his breakfast. So, the Building Department Director fired him. And in this particular matter, in this particular county, there could be a hearing before the Board of Commissioners if you were fired, if you weren't covered by union contract. They since eliminated that. So, he comes to the Board of Commissioners and he says, "I want to go in a closed session." They cannot go in a closed session unless he requests you to. So, the little word that I have underlined here, "If." If the named person requests you to, you may go in a closed session. You can say, "Hell, no." Excuse my language. You can say, "No. We don't want to go in a closed session." It's up to you. But unless he requests it, you can't do it. In this case, they went in a closed session, and they started talking about it, and after a while, he said, "I want to go in open session." So, he had the right to then go into open session. Once you go in a closed session, the named person can request you to go back out. And that's what happened in this case. Well, in this case also, they had some videotapes of them, you know, eating the lunch. You got it there at eight o'clock, I mean, the breakfast and so on and so forth. So, the guy was gone. He was fired. He was done. So, the moral of the story is, if you want to consider suspension, dismissal, complaints, personnel evaluations, you can go in a closed session, but only if the named person asks you to. You can also say no if you want to. Any questions on that one? Thanks, James, for reminding me of that. Closed session minutes, just keep those separate. I have in my outline what I think you should do about those. Yes, sir?
We have a closed session planned for tonight.
All right.
It's just on the agenda.
That's fine.
Okay, but we didn't vote on it, so you can-
You will vote on it before. What's it, what's it on?
Okay.
Oh, what's, what's it, you- Pardon me?
His evaluation.
Okay. So, all right, so Michael's evaluation. What he'll, what'll happen here tonight is, you're allowed to go in a closed session with a majority vote if Michael asks you to. So, what you, your motion would be, move to go in a closed session to discuss the evaluation of the county administrator at the request of the county administrator. If he says, "I don't want you to go in a closed session," then you can't do it. That's the only time you can't do it, uh, under all of these closed session minutes. So, you move to go in a closed session to discuss the evaluation of the county administrator, and you go in a closed session to discuss it. Now, you cannot, you cannot legally discuss what takes place in closed session. It's a misdemeanor, it's a civil penalty, and if it's intentional, you're really in trouble. So, I've had cases where I've been involved in collective bargaining, we go in a closed session, and then subsequently, uh, one of the Board members discussed it with the union representatives. That's a violation of the law. It's actually a misdemeanor. So, whatever takes place in closed session, you cannot discuss or disclose. This is like Vegas. Voting, you have to vote outside a closed session. So, let's say, for an example, you discuss in closed session, the county administrator, a nice big raise because he's doing a great job. Right, Michael? All right. You cannot vote in closed session to do that. You have to, all votes must be in open session. Now, sometimes when you go in a closed session, talk about litigation, and you talk about a settlement up to five thousand dollars, you're not going to go in an open session and say, "Well, we'll move to allow up to five thousand dollars," because then the attorney will know. So, what you do is, you go in a closed session, move to allow the attorney to try and settle the case, A-B-C case. Okay? Any questions on that? All right. One other, other thing on page six is 7B. This is the, you're the only municipality in the state of Michigan that is required to have a majority vote of the entire Board of Commissioners elected and serving for the final passes or adash of any measure of resolution. I just thought that's the quote of the statute. So, let's say, for an example, you have five Commissioners present at your Board meeting. You're going to consider contracting with XYZ Company. You have a quorum. Four vote yes. One vote's no. Doesn't pass because, under Michigan law, county Boards of Commissioners have to have a majority of the Commissioners elected and serving. So, you always have to have five votes for the final passage of any measure of resolution. Not an amendment, but the final passage of the document. Yes, sir? Absolutely. I've seen situations where they failed if someone showed up, and would have been fine. Other than that, uh, there's some legal requirements for calling a special Board meeting. I have those right out here. Now, the Michigan Association of Counties was instrumental in getting this law changed about a decade ago. Before MAC got this law changed, in order for you to call a special Board meeting, you had to give a minimum of ten calendar days prior written notice to each Commissioner, which is absurd. You used to, and now you're required to have one-third of the Commissioners, they petition the county clerk stating the date, time, place, and purpose of the meeting, and you can use, if it's not in your Board rules already, you can use what I put in my outline. Then, the county clerk is then required to give notice to each Commissioner, however you tell her to. It could be email, it could be fax, it could be whatever, mail. So, now, you can limit that to twenty-four hours or forty-eight hours. You don't need the ten days because MAC got this legislation passed. But before, you have to wait ten days before you call a special meeting. But also, keep in mind, you always have to post under the Open Meetings Act for a special meeting for eighteen hours. Let's say, for an example, you want to have a special meeting, you want it next Monday. It's Friday. Your Board rules have been followed. One-third of the Commissioners petition the county clerk specifying the date, time, place, and purpose of the meeting. The purpose of the meeting is to discuss contract negotiations with the M and A. Right?
Yes.
All right. They're not happy, I don't think. I'm not sure. But at any rate, to discuss that, you have to post for eighteen hours that's visible to the public. So, if you just post inside this building on Friday, and you're closed on Friday, the public can't see that for eighteen hours. So, you have to do it on the outside of the building. And now, you have to have a website and all that other good stuff, which is in my little booklet, which I gave you. Not only just that posting. All right, I just want to take a few minutes to talk about some significant laws, uh, labor law, that were enacted in two thousand and one and two thousand and eleven. Now, I'm not talking about whether you like it or you don't like it. This is the law. Public Act fifty-four. That's on page seven on my outline. This states that, once a contract expires, you as a Board of Commissioners cannot legally give any step increases, you cannot legally give any type of benefit increases. Let's say, for an example, an employee was scheduled to get a vacation increase, you can't do it. Uh, an employee was scheduled to get a longevity extra payment, you can't do it, once the contract expires. Let me give you an example. December thirty-first, two thousand and fourteen, your collective bargaining contract expired. You don't have a new contract. Once that contract expires, a public employer is not allowed to give any step increases. An employee was scheduled to go after three years, they're supposed to get a step increase of three percent, go from ten dollars an hour to ten fifty or whatever it might be. You can't do that. You can't legal, can't legally do it, even if you wanted to. Uh, any increase in your fringe benefit costs, you are legally required to pass that on to the employees, whether you like it or not. So, this law also says you cannot later on retroactively give these increases. Example, employee Jones was supposed to get a step increase on February the fifteenth. Contract expired December thirty-first, two thousand and fourteen. It expired two months ago. You finally reached a contract settlement on March first. That step increase cannot go back to the original date. The step increase can only go into effect after the contract's been ratified by both parties. This gives huge incentive for unions to settle. Now, the way it used to be is, once a contract expired, you had to continue to give everything, no matter what, and it could drag on. Now, there is an exemption here. Police officers and firefighters were exempted from this last year by the Legislature. So, for police officers and firefighters are not bound by this statute. And I always advise a client to get started negotiations early because you want to be fair to the employees. Try and wrap it up as fast as you can. But legally, you cannot give step increases retroactively. You cannot give the fringe benefits retroactively. So, keep that in mind in your negotiation process, and I know you do. Uh, I've, I've worked with some of your folks here to discuss this. The other thing is Public Act one fifty-two. That's simply the law that says that a public employer cannot give health insurance costs more than a certain amount. Any amount above that, employees have to pay. It's what's called the eighty-twenty, where you pay eighty percent of the health insurance costs, they pay twenty percent. The other one is what's called hard caps, where every couple of years, based upon a CPI, there's a certain amount for health insurance. So, let's say, for a full family, the most you can pay, uh, these figures are not right, but two thousand five hundred for a two-person, eleven thousand five, and a single, six thousand. Those figures are not right. But, any costs above that, the employees must pay under this law, unless you, as a Board of Commissioners, waive that. You can waive that, but you have to waive it every year by a two-thirds vote. You can't just do it once, and it's forevermore. You have to waive it by two-thirds vote. So, the moral of the story here is, with health insurance, which has been problematic everywhere, uh, I've seen astronomical increases all over the place. It's just incredible. Other places have been pretty steady, but a lot of our counties, uh, they've had huge, huge increases. And fortunately, I'd say about, a little bit less than half have not, uh, but the others have had huge increases. So, keep that in mind, too. The other thing, of course, is the Right to Work Statute, and, uh, that was passed two thousand and twelve. And basically, what that says is that you cannot force an employee to be a member of the union or pay a representation fee. So, what that boils down to is, prior to this law, you could have a, a, a contract that employees that choose not to join a union, it's their prerogative, you can never force a public employee to join a union. There's a U.S. Supreme Court case on that from nineteen sixty-eight, I think it was. Uh, you can't force a public employee to join a union, but you could force a public employee, as a condition of continued employment, to pay a representation fee, which is their fair share for negotiating a contract and servicing a contract. You could do that. Now, with this law in Michigan, you can't, all this law says is, you cannot force an employee to even pay a representation fee. Now, the union, on the other hand, is required to continue to represent the person. So, if you have a bargaining unit of five people, and three of them opt out, the union is still required to represent them, even though they're not getting any payment from them. So, under Michigan law, you can't force an employee to be a member of the union or pay a representation fee, but the contract still remains in place. The employee's still covered by that contract, and the union still has a duty to represent them. Any questions? Michael, I did it. Right on, right on time, like you told me. Anybody else? You want me to go back over this two more times? Thank you. Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, Peter, very, very much. That completes special orders and public hearings. At this time, we've arrived at the first opportunity for public comment. You have five minutes to address the board. Please state your name, and the board, under its rules, will not be answering any questions at this time. First opportunity for public comment.
Peter Bormuth. Since this is a forum where I've learned my lessons in local government from watching and listening and attending your meetings and the meetings of the Department of Public Works and the meetings of the Solid Waste Planning Committee, thought this was an appropriate forum to announce that I'm going to be running in 2016 for the 64th District House seat currently held by Earl Pulaski. I realize it's an early announcement, but I thought it would be to the advantage of my opponents to know who they're going to face very early.
Any other public comment?
I'm Jason Mitchner from Mitchner Plating. I've talked with a few of you in the past, and I just want to state my confusion about the bankruptcy that we are in right now. I was trying to work with Karen Kaufman to find out a result, some way to resolve the back taxes that are in the bankruptcy of 2004, '05, and '06. As of today, I still cannot get an answer from anybody of where I'm supposed to go, who I'm supposed to talk to. I guess that you guys won't talk to me now either, so I guess I'm just here to vent my frustration and, you know, hope that maybe down the road, because I guess in a few months, I will lose the building and I'm fourth generation president right now and 70 years in business, and it seems like nobody in Jackson wants to help.
Any other public comment?
Hi. My name is Tracy Payne. I'm a nurse, communicable disease nurse at the Jackson County Health Department. We're happy to be here today. We're not upset, like was implied, but we are here tonight to just show our united solidarity to our professional nurses' union. We are currently in contract negotiations. Our nurses are professional nurses, and we like to be represented, and we all want to be members, and we're aware that the work that we do in the community is invaluable, and we hope that you agree with that. We do represent the Health Department in many departments, and I know you're probably aware of our services, but we are represented in communicable disease, sexually transmitted infections, immunizations, and maternal infant health support. And we have a fetal mortality program as well. And I know the county appreciates our services, and I hope that you value that as well and work with us to come to some agreement. I know that there are a few things that we are still stuck on. Most, I'm not a perfect speaker, I'm sorry. Most, the language regarding the ability of the union to manage its members, and we would like our union to be able to maintain the membership management. And so we hope that you will work with us. We would like to come to an agreement, and thank you very much for allowing us to be
Any other public comment? Public comment is now closed. We've arrived at special meetings of standing committees. We have a special meeting, Personnel and Finance chaired by Vice Chairman Phil Duckham. At this time, we will adjourn the Board of Commissioners meeting, general meeting, for the special meeting, Personnel and Finance. Phil, your meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Personnel and Finance, tonight we are asked to consider and send forward to the full board, a contract for one-year's service from Jackson Transit Authority. It'll be for 52 hours a week of demand-response service. The cost of this service is $25,000 per quarter of year, not to exceed $100,000 annually. Discussion.
I'd so move to support the contract or approve the contract.
We have a motion in support. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, the same. Passes unanimously. Thank you, Board. That's all we have to do tonight, Mr. Chair.
At this time, we'll reconvene the Board of Commissioners meeting. Did you get everything recorded, Madam Clerk? Thank you. At this time, with approval of the minutes of the January 20th, 2015 meeting. We have a motion in support. Should be appearing before you on your screens. Any corrections? deletions? Minutes passed unanimously. At this time, we've arrived at the consent agenda. Motion for the consent agenda, please. I have a motion for the consent agenda and support. Commissioner Elwell.
I'd like to pull item 11B, as in boy.
That shall be moved to item 15. We will move the sheriff, approval of the Sheriff Law Enforcement Services contract with Norville Township to Standing Committee report, item 15A. Any other items for removal from the consent agenda? We have a motion in support. The clerk has posted the ballot. Consent agenda has passed unanimously. Standing Committee, Affairs and Agencies chaired by Commissioner David Elwell. Commissioner Elwell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is for approval by the Board of Commissioners on a contract with Concord Township with our prosecutor for prosecution services. I had talked to the chair prior to the meeting. I didn't recall actually seeing the contract in committee. There was discussion about the fact that at such a low amount, only $1,500, which is why it can follow this route. One of the concerns I did have with it after I read through it was the fact that there was no language that addresses the revenue that's generated by local prosecution versus county prosecution, and it's something I'm a little bit familiar with. So I'm okay to still send this on or approve it by the full board, but I would ask that they come back at some point and clarify that position on who that revenue is going to, whether it's going to Concord Township or the county. It's not going to amount to that much, in my opinion, but I think it should be part of the agreement. So with that said, I would move for approval with that understanding that there would be a modification at another point to clarify that.
So you have a, we have a motion to support the contract, has written with an addendum to come back to the board with an explanation, or do you want us to actually vote on it, Dave?
Mike, you're nodding your head yes. Which would your recommendation be? I'm okay with an explanation. I'm not saying which way it should be. I just think it needs to be in the contract.
Yeah. What I suggest is that the board approve this. I know the prosecutors really would like to see this move forward.
Yeah, I'm okay doing that, but I'd like to come, have them come back with an addendum just to codify.
Yeah, he needs to.
Who receives that. I'm not saying which should be. I don't care.
Who amend the, amend, amend the contract, so yeah, that's fine. Thank you.
Thank you.
Clarification of where the prosecutorial fees will be due.
Sarah, is there a need to pass this right now if we're going to ask him to come back anyways and then approve it again with addend, possibly with addendums? I mean, my understanding was it was something they were just looking into, and he wasn't expecting a motion, I guess, right away? So I just kind of have a little hesitation in voting on this right now without further clarification.
Commissioner Alexander, you attended the Concord meeting, correct?
Correct. So Monday evening during standing committee meetings, it was presented to us as information Monday night at Concord Township. Their board unanimously approved this.
Mr. Chair, but a point of clarification, we hadn't seen the actual contract until this board packet. The prosecutor talked about it, I think at the study session, was it not, or was it at Standing Committee? I went back to Standing Committees to look, and there was nothing I could find there on it, although I do recall him talking about it. So I guess it's up to the pleasure of the board.
Well, at this time, we have a motion in support with a question of clarification. Do commissioners want to postpone this contract? If they do, I'm looking for a motion to postpone. Seeing nor hearing none, we're going to vote on the current motion made by Commissioner Passes. Commissioner Elwell.
That's all I have to report, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Standing Committee, Human Services chaired by Commissioner Alexander. Commissioner Alexander.
Human Services has no business to bring before the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Alexander. Standing Committee, Personnel and Finance chaired by Vice Chairman Phil Duckham. Commissioner Duckham.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Tonight, we are requested to review and approve a contract between Jackson County Sheriff Department and Norville Township for 24 hours per week of police service.
I'd like to entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the contract, sir.
Okay. And support? And we have support. Commissioner Elwell, would you like to speak to this?
I would. Thank you, Mr. Chair. As you'll recall, I received permission from the board to abstain in committee recommending this based on the fact that my employer, Columbia Township, had bid on this contract, so I think it only made sense to pull it from the agenda so that I can again request from the board to be allowed to abstain from the vote. I'd also like to say, as I did in committee, that I am supportive of this contract, and if I were voting on it, I'd be voting yes. So I'd like to be allowed to abstain.
Is there anyone who would not like him to abstain? By consensus, we agree that Dave can abstain. Thank you. Any questions to the contract or to the motion made?
Mr. Chairman, just one more thing. If the clerk could note in the minutes my thoughts on being supportive of it, although I wouldn't vote. Thank you.
Duly noted. Any other questions to the motion? The clerk has posted the vote. If you'd like to vote. Passed 8-1 with an abstention in, by Commissioner Elwell, who does support it. Commissioner Duckham.
That's all the business we have tonight, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. We've arrived at unfinished business. Under unfinished business, we have item A, the City of Jackson, County of Jackson, Joint Parks Recreational Plan, 2015 to 2019 edition. Is there anyone who would like to make a motion on this? We have a motion? And support. If any questions that would like to be made towards the plan, the Parks and Fair Director is standing ever-present. Seeing nor hearing any questions, any questions or objections to the motion? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, could you post the vote? Congratulations, it failed unanimously. No, I'm kidding.
Thank you very much for your support.
Asked unanimously. Commissioner Alexander.
Thank you. If a constituent or an entity wants to make an amendment or adjustment to this, is that allowed in this process here? I mean, now we have approved this document. Has the city approved?
The city will approve it one week from today.
One week from today. If that request is made, is that feasible?
My understanding is no. Once it's adopted, it's a five-year document.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Now arrived at new business. We've dispensed with item 17A. We're at 17B, GTA contract. If there are any questions, I would ask the Administrator Controller's office to answer them. If not, I'd entertain a motion from the floor. I have a motion? And support. Any questions to the motion? Seeing nor hearing none, Madam Clerk, could you post the vote? Contract passed unanimously. We now have arrived at the second opportunity for public comment. If you would like to address the board, please do. You have three minutes at this time.
Peter Bormuth, I wanted to address the review of our Administrator Controller, Michael Overton. I don't know if this review also includes Adam as the deputy. No. I'd like to say that while I certainly do not always agree with the direction that this board has given the administrators, I think we have two excellent administrators here in this county. I think Mr. Overton has done a superb job in his capacity and in his responsibilities, and Adam as well. So I just wanted to put forward my opinion going into your review.
Any other public comment? Any other public comment? Seeing no other public comment, we've arrived at Commissioner comments. Any Commissioner comments? Commissioner Leitner.
I just want to say that we went on sale for the fair for August 9th for Shinedown. We're going to be releasing their opening band probably in the next few weeks, and ticket sales have been great for that so far, and I just encourage anybody to go check them out at the fair this year, August 9th, and we'll be making another release by the end of March for another show to be held on the Monday on August 10th. So be on the lookout for that.
Any other Commissioner comments? Seeing nor hearing none. In accordance with MCL 15.268, on a personnel matter to discuss the Administrator Controller's annual evaluation at the request of the Administrator Controller, correct?
Affirm the request.
Entertain a motion to go into closed session. We have a motion in support. Madam Clerk, could you post the vote? Unanimous. We will adjourn to the. Motion to return into session. Have a motion in support. All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, duly carried.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion and move to approve a 1% raise for the Administrator based on the evaluation effective on his anniversary date of July 2014.
Any comments? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, can you post the vote? That would be nice.
Commissioner Walls? Commissioner Rice?
No.
Commissioner Duckham?
Absolutely.
Commissioner Alexander?
Yes.
Commissioner Mahoney?
Yes.
Commissioner Plachek?
Yes.
Commissioner Elwell?
Yes.
Chairman Chetwell?
Motion kept passed 8 to 1. I'd like to return to Commissioner comments. Commissioner Elwell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd been thinking about it for some time, and it brought back the memories when we were talking about pay. Two years or so ago, we addressed the issue of pay of elected officials, and I think we agreed at that time that we would be forward-thinking, and prior to any filing deadlines for candidates, we would look at those for elected officials. I think something to be adjusted, and in all fairness to the offices, it needs to be done sooner rather than later. Typically, I think late this year, you'd have people considering running or not, and I'd hope we'd have that decided on what the pay adjustments may be. So I just ask to keep that in mind, and hopefully we can act on it at some point.
The Administrator's office is not aware of it? We will, appropriately. Anything else from Commissioners? Seeing nor hearing none, motion to adjourn. Have a motion and support? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Duly